No problem.
Okay, everyone, welcome to Design Review Commission Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. So first order of business is to establish a quorum of the commissioners. I believe we have three of the five of us here this evening. I'll call the roll. Jude Carrick.
He has to unmute himself.
Here.
Jude.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Jude. David Blockus.
Here.
Thanks, David. And Frank Bishop, the chair. So we have three of the five, so we've established the quorum for the meeting. The first item of this business, it looks like Guido, you have an introduction of the new city manager. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna let him introduce himself. So Gabriel, if you want to.
Thank you, Guido. I just wanted to stop by, say hi to the commission and just say thank you for all of the hard work that you put in. I know Los Altos relies on volunteers quite a bit, and this is a really hardworking board. And I just wanted to say virtually in person that we really appreciate all the effort, time and commitment that you make. So I've been here for about three months and I want to get around and just make sure everyone knows how much we appreciate the efforts they put in.
Okay, great. Thanks, Gabe. Nice to meet you virtually. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments of items not on the agenda. Guido, do we have any of these this evening?
Um, I do not believe so. No one has unmuted themselves for that.
Okay. Then hearing none, I'll close that section of the meeting and move into items for consideration and action. First item here is the consent calendar. There's two items on the consent calendar tonight. We'll try to take both of them together if we can get a motion around that. The first is the Design Review Commission minutes of November 3rd, 2021. And the second is SC 21-0038, 1396 Marinovich Way. So is there a motion from one of the two other commissioners on the consent calendar?
Chair Bishop.
Yes.
Question for the planners staff. Has there been any public comment that we haven't seen on the Marinovich Way project?
I don't believe so, but Steve Golden is the senior planner if he wants to chime in.
I have not received any correspondence.
Nor is there anybody here tonight to speak regarding the item?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's good questions, Jude. So with that, with no further information, would one of the two of you want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just motion to approve the consent calendar with item one, Designer View Commission Minutes, and item two, the project at 1396 Marinovich Way.
Okay, thank you, David. Jude, would you second that?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, then I guess we'll call the roll for that. So.
Excuse me? Hello?
Who's speaking? Yes.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Walsh. I'm sorry, I had trouble with the technology. Most of the links that were sent for the Marinovich project didn't work. So I was a little late getting connected. I'm a neighbor of Marinovich, the project on Marinovich, and I had a question. I'm a backyard neighbor at Bradale Avenue.
Okay. Guido, how do we want to handle a question at this point?
Um, well, we still have a motion on the floor. So if you want to table the motion and then let her ask her question and then I believe Steve's still on the call. So he's the planner for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Let's table the motion for a moment here. And Steve, are you there still?
I am here.
Go ahead, man. Go ahead and identify yourself, man, and then.
Please identify yourself and then pose your question.
A question, actually, a question, Chair Bishop. Should, if there's a question from the public, should we remove it from consent calendar and then move it to the regular agenda for?
Or? That's why I asked Guido how to actually handle this. That could be done? Guido?
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, you can do that. That's fine. So maybe approve the minutes and then.
That's fine. So let's break, let's break the consent calendar into two pieces. And we'll, we'll take the Design Review Commission minutes of November 3rd first. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, motion to approve minutes of November 3rd, Design Review Commission minutes.
All right, thanks, David. Jude, second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call the roll on that. So David.
Aye.
Jude.
Aye.
And Frank, aye. So minutes approved. We'll move SC 21-0038, 1396 Marinich, Mar- Marinovich Way. Yeah, that's really, that's a punch twister there. We'll move that to the first item of the discussion. So with that, then will we go through the whole routine then, Guido, of a report from Steve? Or do we just want to take the question?
Um, that's really your call, Chair Bishop.
Okay. We would do a normal, like a normal item in the discussion session, first of all. So have there been any ex parte communications from any of the commissioners on this particular project?
No. I just, I just met the owner and she opened up the, or basically pointed me to the gate that I could go through to take a look at the rear of the property.
Okay, thanks, David. Jude?
I visited the property yesterday and was led in by an occupant. I don't know if that was the owner, but no conversation other than access to the rear yard.
Okay, and this is Frank speaking. I've had none. So with that, Steve, would you give us a report on the, on the project, please?
Um, I don't really have a report prepared as this was on the consent calendar. And per the agenda report, it meets all the design guidelines and the typical direction that, that the Designer Review Commission has provided in the past with regards to second story windows. With that, we're still, you know, we're recommending approval of this project. And I would recommend just taking the public comment and then we can answer any further questions.
Okay, so why don't we move then to the public comment? So please, the person who would like to ask a question on this, if you could state your name, address and your question, please.
My name is Cecilia Walsh. My address is 1435 Bradale Avenue. And so I'm a backyard neighbor of this property on Marinovich and have been for quite some time. And we, um, the, the window, the back of that house looks into our backyard and in, into our house. The privacy, privacy issues are worse in the winter than in the summer because of trees, deciduous trees lose their leaves. And we looked at the plans and we were notified this through the stating there was a variance. And we looked through the plans and we are not sure what is the variance being asked for.
Okay, so that's, that's your question. I don't know if there's a variance. We haven't been presented with one. Steve, could you answer that question, please?
There is no variance being proposed for this project. And I'm just trying to pull up what might, the notification. But if there's anything further, I can try to pull it up.
Why don't you spend a minute and try to pull that up, please?
Sorry, it's taken an extra long time apparently for our little word document open. I mean, I know that the billboard sign on the front didn't include the variance. Again, I'm just, it's just.
So am I wrong? There is no variance being asked for?
No, and just a quick, I mean, in the rear, I can pull up those plans as well. But yeah, there, there was no variance on the public notice that was sent out. No suggestion of a variance, sorry. But in the rear, yeah, the windows are pretty much in the same location, similar occasion, similar size. I think they're actually raising the sill heights up. So no, no major changes to the rear. So there isn't any, any additional potential privacy impacts with the proposed changes.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, all right. Thank you then. Thank you. Then we'll close the public comment section on this. Is there any discussion from the commission regarding the question that was asked or what Steve presented?
None.
Thank you. Jude?
I think Jude is muted.
Jude?
Sorry, Frank, I'm a little lax on my mute button. Yeah, just to reassure, just to reassure the neighbor, we are looking at this and the windows are basically in the same place that they currently are. There is one new additional window. It's similar in scale to two of the bathroom windows, but they are at very high sill heights. So there should be no increase or compromise of the lack of privacy other than what's already there. So they're actually, in my opinion, improving the situation.
Okay, thanks, Jude. So with that, we've moved this now into the discussion area here. Would I have a motion from one of the two commissioners to make, please?
Yeah, move to approve SC 21-0038 at 1396 Marinovich Way, subject to the listed findings and conditions.
Thanks, David. Jude, would you second that?
I will second it, Frank.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll, we'll call the, call the roll on this. David?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Frank is also an aye, so approved. Okay, so now moving into what was item three. SC 21-0027, 2256 Deodora Drive. So I'll begin this one with the same statement. Have the commissioners had any ex parte conversations regarding this property?
No.
I, I had not discussion about the property, but I fell at the property on my shoulder, which I just had surgery. And so I was in a bit of pain and they came out to check on me.
Oh, geez.
And so there was some discussion whether I needed some water or help down the side of the hill or whatnot, but nothing in regards to the property specific.
Are you okay?
Are you okay?
Yeah, it's sore.
I am very sorry about the accident.
Yeah, we're all good.
Okay, so that was a no from both of the commissioners and Frank has had no discussion with the owners or around the property. So with that, could we get a staff report, please?
Yeah, Sean is the planner for this, so.
Okay.
Here we go. So thank you. Good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. The project before you is a Designer View application for a two-story addition to a two-story house at 2256 Deodora Drive. The project includes 591 square, a square foot addition at the first story and 881 square foot addition at the second story with a new 462 square foot basement. This slide provides the rendering, which is within the plans, plan set of the proposed house along the front elevation. The project is located in a consistent character neighborhood is defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The houses in this neighborhood are a combination of one and two story homes with simple architecture and rusted materials. I should note that I somehow referenced Highland Circle. That was just a typographical error. This property, as shown in the aerial photo, is on Deodora Drive at the corner of Honeysuckle Place. The, this provides the neighborhood compatibility worksheet, which is on, provided on NC 100. This conveys photographs of all the properties at the site, examples of the existing house on the upper right and then the proposed addition to the, to the front and to the back and right side of the property. This again provides the figures of both proposed house. At the bottom of the screen, if commissioners weren't aware, is a section drawing to provide a better understanding of potential privacy analysis to the right side due to a balcony being placed along that location. This is a proposal for the neighborhood compatibility. This provides examples of all the one stories and two stories in the neighborhood. The existing house has a two-story. There's also another property at 2225, one at 1590 Vineyard, and then one additional property at 1574 Honeysuckle. The project does propose a 25-foot front and 25-foot rear setback, which does comply with the required setbacks for the district. Along the right side, the first floor setback is 13.25 feet where 10 feet is required. The second story setback is 40.6 feet where 17 and a half. Staff notes that there is a typographical error on the table and I'm giving, providing you the correct data in regard to the right side setbacks at the first and second story. That is also correctly conveyed on the cover sheet. Along the left side, the first floor setback is at 23.6 feet where 10 feet is required. The second story is also at the same distance where 17 and a half feet is the requirement. Overall, the structure does comply with the floor area, lot covers and daylight plain requirements. Sorry. The proposed project will, will demolish an existing first story roof and form. It will replace the roof forms with hip and gable roofs. As conveyed on the site plan, it does provide details of the first story addition, which are located along the right side of the house, which permit a new kitchen and great room. And in additions along the rear of the house will provide new family rooms, bedrooms and office and bathroom. At the second story, we'll also add for, provide for a new stairwell, a new master bedroom, master bathroom and walk-in closet. And it will include a new projecting front porch. This slide provides an example. On the left side is the existing roof form. As previously advised, they are proposing to demolish a portion of the existing first floor roof form. That is in the dark gray. The white roof form is what's being maintained. And then in the reverse on the proposed, again, that garage roof portion is being maintained except for a portion along the front. And then they're building a substantial, a new proposed roof form, which is a combination of both hip and gable roof forms. Again, this provides floor plans. It, it highlights the expansion off of the right side, which includes the kitchen and great room expansions off of the backside, which includes all of these spaces, office, guest bedroom, walk-in closets, exercise room. At the second story, it does convey the expansion for the stairwell, the walk-in closet, master bath and master bedroom. The proposed two-story house does maintain a traditional style that uses design elements that staff believes are compatible with the existing house in the neighborhood. It uses gable roof and hip roof forms or projecting front porch with columns articulated massing, low pitch roof and high quality materials. The applicant is proposing nine foot six inch tall first floor heights along the front elevation, wrapping around the right elevation. The proposed scale staff does believe is sensitive to the scale of the neighborhood, which is comprised of mostly eight to nine foot plate heights. The applicant has indicated, sorry, second, my slide is messing up. The applicant has indicated that the downward slope of the lot, which the slot slopes from the rear towards the front, it slopes down, that their proposed 11-foot 11-inch wall plates along the rear, it helps to minimize the overall scale due to the downward slope. And while the taller plate height may be partially concealed along the exterior site property line through vegetation like Honeysuckle Place, the residential does the guidelines recommend that good neighbor design has elements and scale found within the neighborhood. From staff's perspective, the proposed 11-foot 11-inch wall plates are not designed to be compatible with the lower scale of the neighborhood due to the design using a higher wall plate. And therefore, we have recommended condition number three in order to minimize bulk scale and promote an appropriate relationship to the adjacent houses that the project plan revised to reduce the second floor wall plate height from 11 feet to nine feet. On the left side of the second story, there are also three, three windows. One small sized window in the master bathroom with a six foot three inch sill height, one small sized window in the water closet with a six foot one inch sill height, and one medium sized window in bedroom number two with a four foot eight inch sill height. As noted in the staff report, as staff had advised, while this portion of the property may be perceived as being two-story, it is not. The, the finished floor height begins approximately, the second story of the finished floor, if it's greater than two, two feet in height, and this portion is considered a story, some, from approximately this location forward, this area is considered one story and this is a second story. But from this portion back, this is considered a single story structure due to the downward sloping of a lot. So I'm not referencing these three windows as being second story windows since they're, they are not considered to be second story windows. On the right side, the, there is one window in the stairwell with a four foot six inch sill height and a sliding door exiting onto a balcony. The balcony is, is located approximately here. It's a sliding door is tucked behind the roof form. The balcony is approximately eight feet to 17.6 feet wide by a depth of five feet to 11.6 feet. It primarily faces the rear yard and also the right side yard. Again, as stated in the staff report, rear facing views are diminished due to the downward sloping nature of the lot. There are no privacy impacts to the rear. Views to the left side are inhibited due to the, the master bedroom wall face blocking views to the side. And any views to the left side are at a one-story, or at a one-story level. Along the right side, staff does believe the applicant is proposing substantial evergreen screening along the right side. And that with the distance of 43.1 feet to 49.9 feet from the side property line to the balcony, that potential privacy impacts will be reduced to a less than significant impact to the, to the neighboring properties. There are 14 trees on the property, although there appears to be quite a bit more. Many of those trees are offsite and staff does not include them in our count. A complete list of those trees are provided on a sheet, sheet 1.1. It's also provided in an Arborist report. Since the project does include landscaping that exceeds, includes landscaping that exceeds 500 square feet, staff does believe that the water fishing regulations will, will apply to this project. Overall, staff does believe existing and proposed landscaping meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations. This concludes staff's presentation. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Good report. So questions, I guess, then for Sean? Jude, would you like to kick it off for us?
Not sure. Kind of lost my camera. Oh, there it is. Sean, I just, I'm just curious in the staff report, you know, you, it sounds like you've made these recommendations about reducing the plate heights. Did that go back and forth a few times or was just one comment and then they said, bring it forward? How did that conversation go?
No, so staff raised issues of scale and bulk in the initial letter and, and we continued to raise that in a subsequent letter. The, I think from, I mean, the applicant could speak more directly to their perspective on it. I mean, I do understand and recognize that along the left side, due to it being one story and along the rear being one story, that, that the scale may be more diminished, but staff continued to believe that it was not. And the applicant's architect and the applicant are here to maybe respond to the basis for their reason to maintain it at the current plate heights.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask them that question when we get there. But there was multiple conversations regarding that over time. Thanks.
I have a question. I was under the.
Hold on, hold on. You'll get your opportunity to speak. David, did you have a question for Sean?
Yeah, Sean, so on the, on the front sheet, project description, the first floor floor area is 1230 as a proposed one. Could you again go, is that because the second floor is really the first floor? You know? Because the, the plans have it at 2278 and then the second floor at 1580. But our little worksheet has the proposed first floor at 1230. When I look at the plans, it looks like it's 2278.
Yeah, I think if you, if you go to sheet A dash 1.3, it will provide a breakdown of the proposed area calculations. It, it can be, you know, if we go to, let me pull this sheet up for you one second. You have to get it one second, sorry. Sorry, my computer's not moving very quickly. Let me try to turn off my video a second. Let me see if I can get this one second. I apologize, my computer's moving.
What are you trying to pull up, Sean?
Just the plans and it's kind of a.
Which, I'll pull it up if you want.
Oh, I got it. I think it's finally moving now. Yes, so, um, so if we go to, to the proposed floor plan sheet under new first floor area, the proposed floor area total is 2278, but existing is 1709. It can be a little confusing because portions of the first floor, if you're facing along the back of the house, are considered part of the basement. They're not considered part of the first floor. And then portions of the second floor are also considered part of the first floor. So they've done a series of calculations that staff worked with them on to calculate it correctly to exclude the basement area from the floor calculation. So their, their numbers are correct as conveyed in the report. And the applicants, applicants could probably speak to that also.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks, David. Thanks, thanks, Sean. So I have questions, but I'm going to hold mine for right now. And we'll move into have the owner and the architect. Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, Sean, who, I'm trying to see who is the.
trying to see who is the which one is the designer?
I did not see the designer. I only saw the
The Khadi firm are on. I saw them, Sean. Good evening. This is Rosa. So let them start. It says KDS.
Of KDS. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. What I don't know the person's first name, so.
Can I ask one question now?
No, Roger.
Not yet, no.
Yeah.
You'll get an opportunity a little later in the meeting to ask your question. Just just hold tight. So do we have the owner and the architect ready to give a presentation to the commission?
Rosa, are you guys prepared to give it? If not, we can just roll with the public comment.
Um, I would like to introduce, but I want my architect to first do the opening.
Okay.
So, could you please start with your remarks?
He's not responding.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. We had some connection, some voice connection problem. Yep. Yes, the design has Sean, thank you so much for putting that presentation together. The project is the existing house is a two story single family residence with major focus on second story on the left side of the property. And then we tried to maintain the additional remodel project to keep the overall curb appeal and bulk of the house minimized. So that's why in addition, we try to take advantage of the definition of the basement to two feet above the grade and we the major addition of the house is towards the backyard and less impact towards the front. Front is basically continuation of the concept of an existing gable roof. But for sure, we raised the roof line and ceiling height to nine foot six. And then one of the reasons of the 11 feet plate height on the back to towards the master bedroom is because of the 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 idea was to keep the roof line simple. So we continued the existing roof line towards the master bathroom. But for sure, if it's needed to be dropped to nine feet, we can certainly work on it and drop it to nine feet. As far as the privacies, we we tried to propose privacy plans, the screening plans are on landscape. But from the design point, also the covered porch towards the family room, there's an analysis for the line of sight on sheets neighborhood compatibility sheet, which I think Sean also had it on his presentation. That shows that there is no privacy issue in addition to the front, in addition to the site setback separation. We tried to keep the design humble, although if we get a chance, we would like to propose also the first floor ceiling to 10 feet from nine feet six, which we also have the option ready and we can even if we have an option to share the screen, we can show it to you. But the basic of the design was what basically I explained and that that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Did the owner wish to speak as well?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. My name is Rosa Alon, wife of Amit Alon, and we feel very privileged and honored to be in the neighborhood and thank you to the commissioners and everyone on the call for making the time at this time of the day. I have a few slides that I'd like to share, but I like to start with saying, you know, really grateful to Sean. We've gone through probably four to five meetings with him in on Zoom on video. In fact, in one of the meetings, I had my camera open showing him the surrounding of the building. So he's been exceptionally helpful in showing us and walking us through the guidelines to make a design that is compatible with the neighborhood. We purchased this home about in 2017. The home was painted red all over it. I'm sure it was in a violation of all city standards. Nevertheless, we got in, we've done our best to make home our home to be representative of the neighborhood and with low cost, we did painting and tried to recover the image of the house. Recently I had a baby, as you can see, I'm in my baby's nursery. And David, in fact, had an accident. Our backyard is not usable for a young family. It's sloped downward. And so what we've tried to do is to expand the home design such that it is a functioning home for a young family. One of my design requirements and wishes was to have high ceilings. Culturally, it's very, very important for me to be living in a home that is welcoming to light, right? Because of the slope, we don't get a lot of light into the house. So on the first floor, I would like for the commission to consider a 10 foot ceiling. Based on the study I have done of different homes being designed and rebuilt or new builds in Los Altos, there have been cases of 10 foot ceilings. I am willing to consider bringing down the second floor ceiling to nine and a half to be within city guidelines. You know, if we're allowed on the first floor where we really have a challenge of lighting and it's not in a lot in accordance with our culture to have more light on our first floor. So we are willing to consider that. If we are given the opportunity to go to 10 foot ceilings on our first floor and, you know, from the research I've done, it is been approved across the neighborhood on several homes. Additionally, we heard from one neighbor who was on on our the side that we're expanding. They liked the design. They wanted to make sure we were not going to impact any trees on their property and we assured them there was no such plans. And we had a mutual agreement together that when the house was going to get, when the landscaping portion is going to start, we'll work with them to replace the fences together. So I thought that was a good conversation. Now I'm going to move into a section where I like to share with you guys the research I had done on the neighborhood compatibility and some of the designs that are being built. You know, I walk around the neighborhood, I see a lot of homes built in very modern architecture, very high ceilings, not compatible with the ranch style homes at all. And, you know, I feel like really truly from bottom of my heart, what we are asking for is to go to 10 foot ceiling on the first floor is something we like this commission and the body to consider. Given we show good faith and we will reduce the second floor height. So let me show you guys what we have. Okay, so just to get everybody up to speed, this was the condition of the home when we purchased it. Definitely not not a site that, you know, neighbors would wanted to look at. The driveway was painted red. All the fences were painted red. The door was painted red. There was an archaeology thing built up on the front. I don't have a picture of it. So we've gone since then and painted everything into decent colors like gray or brown to match the neighborhood. So a lot of improvements and I'm sure this is reflecting of all and our neighbors liked it, right? They came by and they thanked us for this change. Now let's look at, you know, why I want 10 foot ceilings and the research done. Right? So we walked around the neighborhood and we found several single story homes built and even two stories that the architecture really did not fit fit well with the neighborhood. And these are the addresses for protecting their privacy. I did not take pictures and I did not want to, you know, present them here, but I have their addresses. So you can, I will submit them to Sean. So you guys can do your own research. So again, lots of thank you to Sean. We're willing to adjust the second floor ceiling height to not nine, but nine and a half. And then we like to make a change on our first floor ceiling height. So thank you for listening. I'm looking forward to your feedbacks.
Okay, thank you very much. So how about the questions from the commissioners for the owner or the architect? David, you want to start?
Yeah, give me just a second.
Take time.
Yeah, yes, the really only one I have relates to the deck size and space and the privacy aspect. Maybe you can explain a little bit further how you came up with that space at that size of that location.
Is that regarding the deck on the second floor?
Correct.
But that's not a change. David was our house even today, right? So we have a bedroom on the second floor right now that opens to there's like a two level almost backyard. That's why we kind of want to expand over there because we're not really able to use that space, right? So that door, it's effectively just getting shifted over. And that flat area in front of it, we're calling it deck, but it's it's there right now anyways.
Okay, so you're talking the patio.
No, it's just going to be a flat area. I'm going to put two chairs on it. It's like it's it's flat. I mean, it's no change from today.
So if I'm standing on the street, is it the back left or the back right? I'm standing on Deodora. I'm looking at your house, the front door. Is it the back left or the back right?
Could you point to it from the image? I'm very bad with my left and right from the drawing.
So is it the single story side of the house? You have, you know, the bedrooms upstairs, which is sort of classified as the first floor in parts. So closest to honeysuckle or away from honeysuckle.
It's closer to honeysuckle.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I think we're just mis labeling it incorrectly in my mind of what it is. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, David?
No.
Okay, great. Next. Jude, questions?
Well, my only question would be in the plans show nine foot six on the one story wing of the home. Is that existing or is that proposed?
That is proposed.
What is the current existing plate height?
Eight feet plate height is the existing first floor.
Okay, so so basically you're tearing down all the walls. Is that correct?
We are basically raising the plate height. So the walls can stay, maybe some reinforcement in between to get the plate height to nine to six, which we are hoping to get it actually to 10.
And you're doing nothing in the garage or existing bedrooms over the garage?
No, the garage, the garage is existing. The only thing was due to the demolition level of demolition, the project had some non-conforming walls on the second floor, which we included that on the second floor demolition to bring it back to meet the setbacks. So the project at this point is is confirming there is no legal non-conforming situation.
And there's no daylight plane implications. I don't see any
Daylight planes are shown on elevations, but the point that daylight plane are measured from are shown in a red line on site plan. Point of point of daylight measurements. We tried.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, through the meetings with Sean, I actually gave up a lot of features that we wanted. I wanted it bigger windows on the second story for lighting feature again because of the slope. The house is dark. We followed through with Sean's suggestions and as he can confirm, we made a lot of adjustments to the design. It is not exactly what I had envisioned for our dream home to look like. But, you know, we want to be respectful of the guidelines.
Question, did you look at placement of any skylights?
Yes, as you notice, we in the porch, we put skylights. But, you know, I've lived in homes that have skylights. They collect tons of dirt and it's a, you know, it's an eyesight for me to look up and especially in the living room and I see tons of stuff sitting on top of them. So on the second floor where it's not a place we will have guests and so on and so forth, I am putting skylights. But on the first floor, you know, we do like to host family and guests. I like to present a clean home, including where people look up. So in the great room, no, I have not really proposed a skylight and you know, I think the ask we're making is reasonable here. Where I could and it was within my culture and religion, we did it with skylights. But the great room is a center of home and nobody wants a dark center of home.
Jude?
I have no further questions for the owner or the architect.
Did you get an answer to the first question of the existing plate height? I didn't hear the answer.
No, they're they're the existing plate heights are eight feet and they're going up to nine, six on the first floor.
I answered nine, six.
Yeah, we're just to be clear to the applicant and architect, we're only reviewing what's on the current plans.
Well.
Thanks. Thank you.
No, I actually, I like to interject here. We were told to submit nine, six, but come here and make a case for 10 foot ceilings.
We'll get to that in our discussion. So the answer to the question I was asking, which is what I've held so far, was the existing plate height is eight foot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So I have no further questions. So at this point, Guido, I'll turn it over to you and open it up to comments from the public, please.
Great. Let me start at the top. Yeah, let's see. Let me just, I have to expand out my little a bit more, Rosa, Roger, Roger.
Yes, sir.
Speak now.
Yes, sir. I was, I I got invited to to this meeting for the project on the property of 1850 Capistrano Way. I'm confused, so.
Well, then, okay, then hold off, sir. This is for Deodora. Okay, so you hold off.
So so my, so 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 the
Roger, Roger, we're here to talk about now about 2256 Deodora. Okay, are you here speaking on that item or another item? Roger, you're muted.
Roger, you're there.
You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, so Roger, we have we have three items here this evening. Which item are you here to speak on?
He's muted. He has to unmute himself.
Oh, okay.
I did not, I mean, I did not, I did not view myself as someone muted for me. So.
Okay, which which item, which item are you here for tonight?
Okay, 1850 Capistrano, is it is in the agenda?
That 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 will be the that will be the next project that we discuss when we
I see.
This one.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so just hold on for a minute and we'll get there. So back to you. Thank you. Guido, back to you on Deodora for the public comments, please.
Yep, still trying to go through. I've got Dan M. Dan, would you like to speak on this item?
No, I'm I'm here for Capistrano.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. And I've got I'm just double checking. A couple of people came in late to the meeting. So last phone number is the last four of the phone number is 7333. Did you want to speak on this item? Last seven to three, okay. And Joe, Joe Malecki, hopefully I'm not butchering your last name. Joe, did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. You didn't. Thanks. Yeah, Joe Malecki at 1564 Honeysuckle. And yeah, I hear the concerns about the heights. I think from you know, from my perspective on honeysuckle way, the street slopes downward and and as they've commented about the the lot kind of behind them, that slopes, I think, in the that and the, you know, coverage from landscaping and whatnot, I don't think it would be that significant from from my point of view. And so I be in support of the project. And so I'd be in support of the project.
Great. And Joe, what was your, what was your address again?
It's 1564 Honeysuckle Place.
Honeysuckle, okay. All right, and well. Maria joined late. Maria, are you here for this item or another item?
Hey, yeah, I'm I'm joined this for the other items. Thank you.
Sounds good. And Ryan, Ryan, which item are you here for tonight? Okay. I believe everyone is accounted for Chair Bishop for this item.
Okay, Guido, thank you. Then we'll close the public comment section. For this project and open it to the discussion between the three commissioners. So. David, I had you starting on this. Did you want to open the discussion for us, please?
Yeah. I guess my only concerns really are the sill plate heights. This is a unique property without situated sort of down down slope of a property. So I kind of understand. Something desire to have a higher sill plate. But we've never had them that big. And so although we're redoing some of the stuff now in regards to some new legislation. This, I think, is is too high and I agree with staff in regards to. Lowering the, what was it, the second story. So plates down to nine and keep the first floor at nine six. And, you know, just from a standpoint, I'd like to see something sort of break up. And I think it's more of a. Non-structural but architectural design detail, break up the facing of the garage wall from the garage going to the. Space above that. It just appears a little bit large and we try to get away from. You know, a double height, sort of one face type of thing. So I don't know if there's. Some trim pieces or something that can go between the. Windows and the top of the garage doors that might break up that wall to make it a little bit less. Focus on mass in that space. But that's what I have.
Okay, I think that's actually a good idea. Thank you. Jude, thoughts?
Mute myself. Yeah, so very challenging lot, extremely challenging with topography. It's an unusual house, to say the least. You know, I'm having trouble following the plans and I'm an architect, so. It's a little unusual, the step ups, step downs, and. I don't know if that's a great thing. I think the owner and the architect might want to revisit some of that just because as we all age. Having all these steps up and down doesn't seem to be the best thing. But my primary concern obviously is the plate height. First of all, I've been on this commission for eight, almost nine years now and. Second, two-story homes are reviewed differently than one-story homes. We do not see many of the one-story homes in the areas, so those are reviewed by staff. But I can tell you or assure you that projects that become before us in terms of plate heights. You know, our kind of standard is nine feet on the first and eight to eight and a half on the second. Asking for a 12-foot plate height on the second story to me is excessive and I think it actually. Yeah, looking at the roof plan has complicated things. So I'm I'm all in support of staff's recommendation dropping to nine feet. And, you know, my recommendation on the first floor would be nine feet as well. So given that it's at nine six, I'm lenient there, but no way would we go to 10 feet. I am concerned about the street view from Deodora. This is an upsloping lot, so the more bulk and mass or plate heights added. Is going to just make it that much more bulky and messy from below, especially when the trees get cleaned up. A little hard to tell on Google because the home is blocked out. If you look on Google Street View, I don't know why that is, but. Anyhow, I think by reducing the plates on the second story at the master, master closet and master bath. To nine feet, I think, is okay, the direction. Keeping it at the current height in the loft, I know why the loft is the height and I see what they were trying to do. So the loft plate height does not have to change, but the other plate heights in those areas. Master suite could definitely be dropped to nine feet. And I am I am concerned a little bit about the, per David's comment about the kind of delineation of the. The second story over the garage doors. So there should be some breakup there, I think, just to improve the overall aesthetic from the street. That's my comments.
Okay, Jude, on that architectural detail, did you have a suggestion that you'd like to make there?
Well, the guidelines talk about, you know, adding some kind of break, whether it's an architectural feature, some kind of roof line or recessing the doors. Right now, the second story looks top-heavy over the doors. You know, if this were a new home, we would suggest the garage be. Elevated, but they're calling this a remodel, which. You know, at this point, they're touching virtually all aspects of the house, so I would encourage them to relook at all aspects and maybe rebuild. But I think they could add some architectural feature over the garage to minimize the impact of that gable. Over the bedroom area.
Okay, all right, thanks. So. Thank you, Jude. I agree with both of the commissioners and and staff actually on reducing the plate heights. Their request to be on what we approve in second stories, first and second stories typically. So with that and some type of a detail that would break up that that face. Above the garage, I think that would be, I think that would be fine for me. So with that, we're all pretty much on the same page, the three of us. I guess, would one of you want to try to make a motion on the project to try to include? The requests from staff and any further reductions that you feel are necessary in the in the height of the plate?
Well, I've got I've got a question, Frank. Should this be continued or just in terms of discussion? You know, it would be good to see what it looks like when it's, you know, dropped. So just giving them direction to drop it to nine feet, I think, is a little open-ended because. I think I'm not sure what it's going to look like in the end. So it would be good to see it again, in my opinion.
We, oh, we could, we could certainly do that. David, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I would concur. Okay, there's just a little bit, there's three major.
Yeah.
Categories or whatnot, two of the sill plates and one with the garage facing. So it'd be nice to have a relook at that.
Oh, that would be fine with me as well. Then if you'd like to continue it, I thought maybe we could get it done this evening. Any other further discussion on trying to get it done this evening rather than continue it?
No, I would, I would suggest continue and.
Okay.
Your alley, so I. Pass it to you to make a motion.
Yeah, I think it's not, it's not a simple, you know, just drop it to nine feet. I mean, there are other major implications. In terms of the overall roof line. So between the. Architectural feature that we're talking about over the garage doors and the plate height adjustments, I think it should come back. With those specific direction.
So may I?
Not right now, no, no. Thank you, though. Okay. All right, well, let's let's go that road then. Would one of you like to make a motion then to continue the project?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we continue SC 21-0027. The remodel project at 2256 Deodora Drive per. Per staff's recommendations to reduce the plate height at the second story to nine feet. At the master suite area, which includes the master bedroom, master closet and master bath. And also include an architectural feature, whether it's a roof line or some other architectural feature over the garage to. Mitigate some of the bulk and mass impact facing Deodora.
All right, about the first floor sill plate?
And reduce the first floor sill plate to, David, nine feet?
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Okay, second, all right. Thank you, David. Okay. Let's take a, let's take the roll call on this one then. Jude?
Hi.
For the motion, David?
Hi.
And I'll go eye on this too. We'll take one more, one more glance at this before we approve it. So. Motion approved, three, three to zero. Okay. Thank you to the owner and to the architect. We'll look forward to seeing you again. So now we'll move.
I'm sorry, I I I'm not okay with the suggestion. So what's the process for next steps? I'm not going to go reduce my first floor ceiling to nine feet when I know in the neighborhood.
Okay, right. So so that's the that's the decision of the commission this evening. You're welcome to talk to Guido is the next step or bring it forward to the city council.
Okay, so you guys are the city council with the addresses that has been approved. So please move us to city council. I'm now going to come back to here because.
Okay, Frank.
You can, you can work the details with Guido on that.
Yeah, we will, we will, we will talk to the applicant offline.
Yes.
And for Rosa, so the the DRC has given us direction. And we can work with you in terms of that direction. And right now, we're going to be moving on to the next item. Okay, so you can talk to Sean. And and we can set up a time to talk to you in the next week, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right. Okay, thank you, Guido. And so we'll move forward. SC 21-0032, 1850 Capistrano Way. And I'll ask the commissioners before we begin if you've had any expertise communications on this project.
No.
No.
And Frank is a no as well. So with that, could staff make a presentation, please?
Yes, Jiao Liu is one of our newer planners. She'll be presenting tonight.
Yes, good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. This is Jiao Liu, Associate Planner. Before you, I'm presenting a design review application, file number SC 21-0032. For a new two-story, single-family house at 1850 Capistrano Way. This project includes 2,268 square feet at the first story and 1,232 square feet at the second story. And this is the 3D rendering of the proposed house for your reference. The subject site is located on the end of Capistrano Way. The Capistrano Way is a cul-de-sac branching out from St. Joseph Avenue and located between Granger Avenue and Robles Ranch Road. This cul-de-sac serves 11 single-family units currently. This slide provides the picture of the existing house and the surrounding properties and the neighborhood context map. The neighborhood is considered as a diverse character neighborhood as defined by the residential design guidelines. Step found the characteristics of the neighborhood is generally consistent in a low profile and similar architectural styles. In a median neighborhood context, most homes are one-story. In addition to three existing two-story homes. They are located at 1875 and 1890 Capistrano Way. And 1245 Sando Wood Lane to the backside of the property. On Capistrano Way, the homes, in addition to the properties fronting the bar of the cul-de-sac. Share similar front setback pattern. All the homes are found with low-scale horizontal eaves lines with wall plates that appear to be between eight to nine feet in height. Reforms along Capistrano Way are mostly in a simple pattern that is either cross gable roof or cross hip roof. With composition shingles. By contrast, two properties at 1235 and 1245 Sando Wood Lane adjacent to the rear of the subject site. With more complex roof patterns, excuse me. The exterior materials commonly used in the neighborhood include stucco and wood siding with brick veneer and wood trim accents. The house is found consistent with the R1-10 zoning district development standards, including setbacks, daylight line. The floor area ratio, site coverage, height, etc. The house is designed with a greater front setback of 42 feet and three inches that is similar with the existing one-story house front setback. Although the house is designed in alignment with the minimum required side and rear setbacks. As you can see from this site plan, that the house is designed to shift its two-story focal appearance noticeably to the left. This focal shift is found to respect to the existing site conditions with three considerations. Number one, the subject site is a pie-shaped lot with the beautiful area narrow in the front and the wider in the back. Number two, the site is not completely completely a flat lot. It has elevation differences to the both sides. Compared to the left adjacent property, the pad of the house is about five feet lower. And compared to the right adjacent property, the house is about four feet higher. Which you can tell from the provided street space visualization to this bottom left on the slide. And last, the house is is designed again with a greater front setback in order to retain two protected trees in the front yard. With regard to the proposed floor plan, the entry of the house is designed with a projected roof, a projected porch. Turning left from the entry, it is a living room connected with a kitchen, dining room and family room to the rear of the house. Turning right from the entry, it is the stairway to the second floor and bedroom number four with the bedroom number four, bathroom number four and the large den room. The garage is placed attached to left of the house through a mudroom to the kitchen and dining room area. On the second story, it primarily hosts three bedrooms with three bathrooms. The primary bedroom with the primary bathroom is located to the rear of the second floor. An additional two bedrooms along the, along with the bathrooms are placed in the front of the second floor. The architecture of the house is changed from one-story traditional ranch style to a modern architectural style. It is designed with a low-scale 4 in 12-foot roof. That have integrated gable and hip roof forms with concrete tile roofing material. Step found the second story massing is generally balanced over the first story, given that the recessed second story from the first story wall. And the projected gable porch with horizontal eave line that further breaks up the massing. The overall height of the proposed residence is 25 feet and four inches, consistent with the maximum height of 27 feet in the R1-10 zoning. The wall plate heights along most of the exterior elevations are nine feet at both first and second story. Except for the family room with a 10-foot plate height at the first story facing the rear of the property. Considering the greater front setback of 42 feet and three inches. Step believes the second story house is designed to minimize the bark of the. Minimize the bark and massing to the immediate neighborhood. For the material, the unit is designed with high-quality construction materials, including stucco finish, concrete tile roofing and fiberglass window frame. Overall, the project is found to establish its own design integrity while incorporating some design elements, materials and scale found in the neighborhood. With regard to the privacy, as Commissioners can find on the slide. Both side elevations have incorporated tall window sill heights to mitigate privacy impact. both side elevations have incorporated tall window sill heights to mitigate privacy impacts. As a result of community outreach along the right elevation, one small-sized window and one medium-sized window are proposed with the same sill height of six feet. Oh, sorry, which is five feet and six inches. And along with the left elevation, five small windows are proposed with the same window sill height of six feet. Additionally, the windows along the left, left elevation will be frosted glazing to ensure no privacy intrusion. With the proposed tall window sill heights along both elevations, Steph believes that there shouldn't, should be no privacy impacts to adjacent site neighbors. For the rear elevation, most windows are small with the same sill height of five feet and six inches that should not raise privacy concern. One large three-panel window penetrated for the primary bedroom may have the privacy impact. Steph has worked with the applicant during the design review process to change the sill height of the window from originally proposed two feet to the current three foot and six inches, which is mandated for egress per California Building Code. With potential privacy invasion caused by this window, there are additional screening vegetation proposed along various side property lines, which will be presented in details by the landscaping plan later. This slides presents existing trees' conditions and the tree protection plan. For the office report, there are, which you can find in attachment B of this, of the packet, a total of forty-seven trees are identified and assessed. Trees number two, which is oak tree, number three, pine tree, number eight and number forty-one, uh, red, redwood trees, a city-protected trees and will be retained through the construction by the Arborist Tree Protection Plan. Ten existing trees or shrubs out of the forty-seven trees will be removed. That includes fruit trees and trees that are either dead or in a poor structural form. Overall, the existing site has a pretty dense vegetation and the applicant will retain most of them. This slide presents the landscape plan as filled in the dark green. Eight American fir pines with a minimum size of fifteen gallons will be planted to the left side and rear property line for evergreen screening. The Amer, the American fir pines will grow up to thirty feet to fifty feet tall and twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet wide at its mature age. However, Steph did receive a correspondence from the property owner at twelve thirty-five Sando Wood Lane, which also presented to the commissioners for the concern of the fir pines that will grow too tall and too large. Therefore, Steph recommends the screening vegetation to be placed with his, his parroom and a forium. For your information, this vegetation will grow up to twenty feet to thirty feet tall and six feet to eight feet wide. Additionally, other block cover and shrubs will be planted. Considering the project would construct a new house, the landscape plan will subject to the water-efficient landscape ordinance for water preservation. Lastly, for community outreach, the applicant has installed a billboard on site in early August and also reached out to the immediate neighbors with certified mail receipts, as you can find in attachment E as well as on this slide. Additionally, Steph involved conversations with the adjacent neighbors to the two sides, although it may not ease all the concerns from the neighbors, the tall window sill heights and frosted window glazing as a result of the outreach. With information presented above, Steph recommends that the design review commission approve design review application SC twenty-one dash zero zero thirty-two with the one additional condition that the proposed evergreen screening vegetation shall be placed, replaced with pitos parroom and forium, uh, excuse me, tenephroium with a minimum size of fifteen gallons. Steph now concludes the presentation and open for comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and welcome to the team. That was a, that was very good and detailed presentation. Okay, so with that, Jude, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. David, any questions for staff?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, we'll get there in a second. So that's fine. I have no questions for staff either. So let's move then down to the owner, architect portion. Do you have a presentation to share with us this evening?
Joyce, Joyce Lou is shown as the architect. Joyce, do you have a?
Yes. Hi, could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair and the Commissioners. I'm very honored to be here and to explain a little bit briefly about this project. How do we involve into get this project and the go this far? And I have to thank you, the city planner, Ja, she spent countless times, hours with us and give us a guideline and, and, and the recommendations and also be better understanding of the zoning code and the design guideline. That's why the original design, it was not like this, but we come up with this. I think we're, I'm confident that it meets the city's requirement. So if I may, could I just share the screen with you, which? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Where is it? Okay. Can you see it? Can you see it?
Yes, we can.
I cannot see it. Okay, so let me move to here. Thank you. Let me, yeah, really, I made a, a very brief of PowerPoint presentation just to, to give a a view of this. And then you can, as Ja explained, so this part I let it go. The location of the site. If you look at my slide, I have several categories. It's the location maps, the site, the house, the design, then the question answers. Okay. And then lot is like this. The next one is the neighborhood, the context map. Then pretty much it, as you know, the, the majority of my neighborhood on this street is.
Joyce, 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 I want to stop you. We're not seeing your full screen. We're only seeing.
A very small part of it.
Yeah.
Do you see it now? No?
No.
Okay, let me try one more time. I'm so sorry.
Perfect, thank you.
You see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yep, there is me. I'm not really high-tech person. Okay, I still do my hand drawing these days. So you can see this is a, let me make a quick, the context. I just want to point out, even though it's a little bit sharp, a quarter of the immediate neighbor is two-story, is twenty percent less than a quarter. However, if we consider next small street, which is immediate adjacent, then the, the percentage of the two-story will be more than forty, forty percent. Just give you an idea. I did my site survey and all of that. And this one, I just want to show you, I, this, those are the photos I took. The eight, eighteen fifty, do you see my cross? No, huh? Do you see my the arrow? No. Anyway, yeah, you see this eighteen fifty, then to the left, which is, you know, eight sixty. All of this, you can see my, it, it exists is much lower because of grading difference. Then when we talk up, see the other side, you can see they are lower than my property. This is the middle one. You can see I took those three together. Then it's the nineteen, eighteen sixty and our project and this one, which is totally, totally behind the, the landscape and the green. So next one, I really want to get quick. And I personally draw this, then you can see the, the skyline. Oops, sorry, 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 wrong. And the skyline, actually, it's about same, right? But for this area, for the, for the right-hand side of the property, you can see I carefully shifted the second floor with much lower sill height into the, towards the left side. So you can see the line, it's very gradually going up and I did a shadow study and also the daylight plane. So I think it's good. Okay. The next one, those are, I want you to see, oh, look at the middle one. See here, I insert the new house here. Then you can see, even though it's not built yet, you can see the relation with the previous one. It's like this. Then the new one is like this. So it's hitting, I cut some tree at the front because otherwise you won't be able to see it. But still, scale-wise, I think it's, it's, it's good. Then the survey, you know, it just, this existing, then I want to show you my site plan. Do you see the dash line? That is the existing one-story house. It's about nineteen some square feet, a little bit less than two thousand square feet of how. Then you can see I was able to, it was not easy. I was able to squeeze, squeeze everything within the setback in this crazy pie-shaped lot. And also you can see follow the existing footprint. That was the biggest challenge I made. Yeah, okay, then next one is landscape. Landscape most existing to remain, then we do have bushes and trees along the real site property line. However, we talked to the owners adjustment, then we know their concerns. So that's why I introduced some big trees here and also to this thing. But on the left-hand side, we don't even have a high window. The only one window we have is a master bedroom for egress building requirement. We tried to, let's, let's go to never. I show you the yeah, privacy. I think that will be the biggest concern. If you can see here, I drew the site view line and where it's blocked by the, by the new tree or existing tree, only the yellow area that from, from my window, which is not that big, to the corner of the second floor. So it will be blocked and beyond is our tree then, then there's another two trees, big trees there. So I don't think there's any impact to the property on twelve twenty-five. But the twelve thirty-five, we met with the owner. Then thank you very much for providing us so many valuable feedback. So I did the, the things I think I improved and he's here, he can explain. Then this one and to the nineteen, no, eighteen sixty, even though we don't have any privacy impact, but we still put big trees. Yeah. And I also personally talked to the owner, Alice, on the eighteen fifty-five. Yes, we, she doesn't want any tree there, but she, she wants us to have a, a higher window in the master bathroom, which I changed. And also you can see I propose a fir pine, this fifteen-gallon is already in a very fast growing, yeah, this twenty-four. And also I produced a two image, like one existing for the view from a twelve thirty, twelve thirty-five dance backyard at their patio. And to look at, this is nothing, it's existing. This way, you can see the second story we intrude in the perspective. So this one, we haven't added tree yet. So I'm pretty confident that that will pretty much mitigate the, the privacy impact. I'm so sorry, we have to have a egress window there. Okay, then for the site, the floor plan, I'm just going to spend five seconds. The principle is I try to squeeze them in. You can say it's contemporary, contemporary concept, open space without any walking like hallway, those things was not easy to make, but I made it. And, yeah, so the second floor, you can see it's only, yeah, portion of the second floor. They're facing the backyard, only the high window, except this bedroom with egress and the very limited window. Sorry, then elevations, then I can topic of a material a little bit later. Sections, oh, then I, yeah. Okay, let's go to the, yeah, design principle. I, I took it later. Let's look at the material board. The first one, the dark gray, it's a majority of the the, the, the exterior wall. And I'm going to use a smooth finish of stucco, which is, stucco is a very, it's very traditional. And I'm going to make a really high quality of it. So looks really highly nice. And the roof is concrete flat tile. And this picture shows the accent color of the front. So when you, oh God, yeah, when you see here, you can see front, I do want some excitement. Okay? Little bit, which higher, uh, which lighter color. That window itself is a very simple casemate window. And I do not add any trim or molding because I do believe simplicity is my design principle. And I do believe, and I, I really appreciate less is more. Okay, then know what I'm talking about. Yeah. Oh, Jude, yes. Then the high window is like this and also the garage door is a dark color. Okay, with, with glass. And this is a little one for the, the, the exterior door in, I mean, the light is, and this is pave and the entrance door and the sliding door first floor, that's about the material. And I already specified, we use Kali Moore, what kind of, you know, color we're using. And also window, we're going to use in Marvin. So I believe high quality and good workmanship is a key. And the design-wise, I do not want to add any unnecessary details or decoration, for say. Then the principle, I think, design goal to me is a new house built in harmony with the neighborhood. I want this house to be, to be nice and the neighbor likes it. And the design principle, number one to my client is usability. And the second is complexity, less is more. The third is comparability to the neighborhood. The fourth is sustainability. I really don't have time, but I can explain when we have more time. Then the site uniqueness, you know, shape, this is a pie shape. And unfortunately, huge, huge stripe of the backyard, I cannot do anything. And the city zoning won't allow me to do any even porch roof in, in. Sorry. So, okay, so I'm going to conclude my presentation. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. So questions for the owner or the architect? Jude first, please.
Sure. Joyce, just curious, did you consider adding any additional windows in the front stair? There's, you have one window facing the street. Did you have a window at the side at any point?
It's muted, so. Joyce, you need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, thank you, Jude. Actually, my design, original window is bigger and there are two. But because of the per design guideline, I tried to minimize the types of the window I'm using. So you can see so hardly and only one type or two types. And, and I wish I can do two. Then even like same size, let me go back to elevation. Okay. Oops, not this one. Uh, not this one. One more. Okay. Okay, so if I could, before I don't have a porch. But entrance identification is a deep design guideline. Before I don't have it, then I have a couple of windows and, and the sequence one by one, it's really nice. But, but it's changed. But if you want me to explore, but I have an issue, so I would see. And if I have a more vertical one window, that's really nice. That's what I like.
But my question to you, Joyce, did, did staff or anybody comment on the windows in the stair? Was that a concern of theirs?
I was, I got a comment say too many window types. So I, yeah, I reduced it. I, I changed it. Yeah, I wish I can do bigger. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jude?
No.
Okay, David, questions for the owner or the architect?
I have none.
Thanks David, I have none either, so, uh, all right. So Guido.
Yeah, we'll start off with.
Could you open this up for the pub, yeah, public, uh, comments and discussion, please?
Sure, Dan M, he's the first one that pops up on my screen, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, hi, Dan Mochizuki, twelve thirty-five Sandalwood. So my back fence is shared with the back fence of eighteen fifty Capistrano. And I have, hi Joyce, I've been in
Hi.
uh, contact with Joyce Lu, the architect for that project as well as the owner. Um, I do have, I'm sorry to say, I do have significant concerns about the privacy of my backyard, one of my bedrooms and my family room. From that master bedroom window on the second floor, that window has clear sightlines to my entire backyard, usable backyard. I feel that it's a potential privacy issue affecting my, um, comfort at my home, safety as well as future resale of my home value. The, and I believe that is accepted as a fact. So, uh, they have proposed the planting of the three American firm pines. Uh, those are going to be right under the PG&E wires that feed both the backside of, um, Capistrano as well as my home. And I don't think that is really a, a very good idea. In fact, I'd be surprised if that, you know, would be even allowed, there must be an easement or something there. So I want to state my concern that I don't, I don't believe that this plan really works well for me. And I think it really is a significant problem for me.
Okay.
Conclusion of your comment, Dan?
Uh, yes, I request a revision of the plans so that there is no window that has clear sightlines affecting my privacy.
Great, thank you Dan. And next up, we have.
Roger.
Yes, we have, go ahead Roger.
Yes, uh, I, uh, I'm the owner of one, two, two, five Sandalwood. So I, I also share, uh, uh, backyard fence with the, uh, with the property. I, uh, currently, along the, uh, along the backyard fence, there are brushes, there are taller than the, than the fence. So, so I've, I've, so I feel, so I feel good. The problem is that my product, my property's, uh, elevation is three feet below, you know, below yours. So I heard you are, you are going to remove the brushes along the fence. Uh, and, uh, I don't know whether you want to, you, you will be replacing it with some other vegetations or you are, or you are going to leave, you know, leave it empty.
Can I answer?
Yes.
No, no, right now.
We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you a chance to rebut, yes, so just, just hold on Joyce.
So that's my, that's my concern.
Okay, thanks, thanks Roger.
Yes, uh, I also have, uh, Joyce, Joyce mentioned that, uh, uh, there's a big tree, there's a big tree uh, in my, in my, you know, on my side that will block the view into my, you know, into my family room. Well, that big tree, uh, I, I, I actually cut it. It was a big tree, but I cut it down quite a bit and now, now, now the tree is bare. Uh, it's a, it's a juniper tree. Uh, I learned of the hard, the hard way that once you cut it's, it's growth point, it, it doesn't grow back. So the tree is bare now. Uh, so, you know, I did not know that, uh, there will be a new owner. Uh, the owner will be, uh, tools, tools or a house. So, so, so yes, from, from your second floor, you, you can definitely, uh, look into my family room. Whether, whether or not that tree is there. So that's my concern, that, I mean, that, these are my two concerns. If, if Daniel can, uh, convince you to have, uh, to replace the current windows on the, on the, on the master bedroom to be a smaller one and, and not as, as not as, uh, you know, as transparent, I would appreciate it too.
All right, thank, thank you Roger.
Thank you.
Guido?
Yeah, I'm still, still going down the line here. Uh, Roger, I've got, um, June, Maria, Maria, did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, I, I think I don't have any comments here, so I very appreciate Joyce's effort. She make a lot of effort to talk to, to design this house, so I don't have any comments, thank you.
Great, and I've got, um, Roshi Shadev, I'm sorry if I messed up your name, did you want to speak today on this item?
No, no, I'm just listening in.
Okay, sounds good, and I've got Ryan, Ryan, did you want to speak on this item? Okay, and last four of the phone number seven, three, three, three. No, okay, and Tony Yao, Tony, would you like to speak on this item? No, okay, going once, I think that is it, Chair Bishop of all the people, so.
Okay, uh, thanks Guido. So to the owner, uh, or Joyce, the architect, did you have any rebuttal or anything you wanted to share back with the questions and concerns that were raised by Dan and Roger?
You need to unmute yourself Joyce, so.
We can hear you.
Joyce, you need to unmute yourself, so.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead Joyce.
Yeah, and I, I'm so sorry that for Dan's comment about the, uh, the, his concern about his privacy, I would like to see, say that number one, uh, we are not really that close, like side yard, you have ten feet, then you get into other people's yard. This is already forty feet to our backyard fence, then another forty feet. So we're talking about eighty feet to one hundred feet away. And we are going to put the trees there, the tree, the species of trees that we can discuss. If you have some better idea, I, I will convince my client to go with it. I, I think whatever we can do to ease this concern. Then, then, uh, talking about, uh, Roger. Hi Roger, I met you when the first time I knock your door, right? To, yes, thank you for coming, I give you feedback. Number one, I want to assure you that if you look at the plans, the bushes along the, the rail fence, we are going to, we are going to remain those trees. And I do find the previous owner, they cut it too shorter. Actually, those are not a new trees, those are bushes. We will let it grow, okay, we will keep it. Thank you, and then I, I, I do think we, because our, uh, window is far, far away with angle, and the people really want to open the window, stick their head out and use that telescope, whatever to look, they may, otherwise, it's not going to happen. Thank you, yeah, and before, I really want a little balcony to the family room, that would be really nice. I do have a luxury of the setback that allow me to have it. But that's absolutely no, no to, thank you John, to raise this privacy concern, so we forget it. So we end up with a, uh, three for six seal height. And we, which I'm not too happy, because from the proportion from interior, I want three feet instead of three for six. But however, to acknowledge a neighbor's concern, I made it. That's a maximum the city can allow, allow us, thank you.
Okay, uh, thanks Joyce for that. So with that, uh, I will close the public comments section, particular project, and we'll move into the commission discussion. David, would you like to lead off, please?
Sure, um, yeah, I like the project, uh, I think kind of fits in well, given the lot, given the different elevations. I think the only potential, you know, and I, I do appreciate the architect and applicant reaching out a little bit more than say, some of the others that we've seen over the years. To get some feedback from neighbors and trying to answer their questions and concerns. As I see, the only thing that I see as a potential negative, which is really something that can be, um, overcome quite easily, is with a little bit more detailed, um, landscape plan, specifically on the back and define some plants that would give, uh, the neighbors behind a little bit more, um, you know, privacy and, and, you know, not affect the house or whatnot, either on either side. And so I think that needs to be maybe vetted out a little bit. I think we're looking at the house from the very closest part to the back lot is, or the back property is thirty-three feet to forty feet. And I think either, and I, and maybe one of the other commissioners can remind me, I don't recall if the fence is new, old, tall, short, um, but it could be as simple as a new, you know, six foot fence with a couple of feet of lattice and then some trees that maybe go eight, ten, twelve feet high, uh, to provide that privacy. It's interesting, the rear, uh, neighbors don't want, um, or want trees and blockage, you know, with concerns for PG&E power lines. And the neighbor that's probably, in my opinion, most affected immediate right, which is downhill, and you can kind of look in, doesn't want any privacy screen. Because I, you know, my guess is she probably wants more natural light, but that's just a guess. So I would approve the, uh, project as is with maybe a caveat that the neighbor, the rear neighbors and the applicant get together to come up with a landscape on that back line that would match and make everyone content and wouldn't been, wouldn't have to be cut down, you know, in five years' time, uh, per taking care of the PG&E lines. So I support the project.
Okay, David, uh, thank you Jude.
Uh, similar, similar comments, um, first of all, and once again, another challenging lot. Uh, we've seen back to back lots that are affected by topography and shape, so, um, not an easy design. On the architecture side, I think the home is well done, very well balanced. Um, I do think there are areas that Joyce can look at, particularly the, the front stair. Um, it just seems to be a poked hole in the front facade. I would, I would love to see a little more, um, definition of that staircase, maybe a bigger window, maybe a window on the side, which has absolutely zero effect on the neighbor's privacy to the right. Um, so I think the architecture in that area can be improved. And it'll also help mitigate some of the, um, uh, continuous wall plane there. Uh, that's to the right of the, uh, front porch. So I would encourage, uh, the architect to look at that, as well as maybe simplifying the roof line over the, the staircase. Uh, maybe that could be a shed off the main line, right now it's a little convoluted there. But those are all minor tweaks that to me, don't necessarily affect the approval, uh, but it would improve the architecture. But the bigger issue is, uh, privacy, I think, uh, once again, there's been, uh, great effort to minimize the impact on neighbors on either side. The uphill neighbor definitely is less impacted by, by the project due to the change in topography. And that's kind of the side of the house. The neighbor on the right is definitely more affected, but given the position of the second story as well as the windows facing that side, I don't think there's any privacy impact. Getting back to David's question about fences, that was my first comment, there's a very short fence on the right side. And I think part of the condition of this project would be to do new fencing up to the maximum on all sides, particularly the right and rear, uh, to help mitigate some of the privacy impacts. For the neighbors on Sandalwood and the neighbor directly behind, clearly, this is, uh, most impactful to them. And that's exasperated by the change in topography. I do think that planting screening, picking the correct screening along the rear fence line, even though that's part of a PG&E easement, you can plant screening in there up to a height that doesn't interfere with the power lines. So PG&E wants probably about five feet of clearance. So if you can, uh, pick something that grows well into that height, to that height quickly, and then maintain it at that height, I think it'll, um, enhance the privacy between the two properties as well as not affect any solar, uh, gain to the neighbors on Sandalwood, solar panels, uh, downhill. So I, I agree with David that a more close review of the landscape along that rear line as well as the fencing, um, could be something done here that would make this a win, win, win for neighbors on all sides. So I would, I would want to see this come back with some more detail, uh, in those areas.
Okay Jude, uh, thank you for that. Uh, I like the project as well. I think the architect made great efforts actually to, uh, address upfront the privacy concerns with the design of the building of the, of the neighbors. And the architect and the owner seem to be, uh, more than agreeable to coming up with a landscaping plan and a, uh, you know, proper set of, of, of trees along the, uh, along the back line that will, uh, provide privacy, yet fit in with the requirements of the, uh, utility as well as the, the solar panels on the, on the neighbor's home. So, uh, I think coming back with a detailed landscaping plan is a very reasonable request, uh, at this point. Uh, Jude did make a, I think, a good comment about a, a window in the staircase on that side. I think that would actually improve the light in that area and have no privacy effect at all, actually, on the neighbor. So that's something I would ask them to consider, uh, in the plans when they come back in, in front of us. So, uh, I'm in support of the project, I think a little more detail would be helpful. And with that, I'll leave it to one of the two commissioners to make a motion to that effect.
I have a question, um, probably more for Jude, are you saying continue and have them bring back the project? Or have, uh, staff, uh, have a condition of, you know, like the fences and trees and all that? Or do you really want them to work on that stairway area?
Well, um, you know, we clearly heard from the neighbor on Sandalwood, I excuse my name, or not remember the name, at twelve thirty-five, but I think, to me, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable. Um, if, if we think, and I'm confident that staff can work through that with them, but I just don't want to be a situation that we're conditioning something and then, you know, everybody, somebody's still not comfortable. I, I know privacy is, uh, the biggest concern here, so I just want to make sure it's been vetted to the fullest.
So then to answer David's question, you'd like to see it come back?
I, I personally would, and it also gives the, the architect Joyce, an opportunity to clear up, clean up the windows at the staircase in front and, you know, improve the roof line a little bit there. So I, I'd be interested to see what she, she comes back. So I, I'd be interested to see what she, she comes back with. But once again, these are just minor comments. The ma- major comment is the, uh, rear line screening.
Right. So I think we're all in agreement that the, uh, the, the building itself is actually pretty close to what we would. I, I actually liked it, right? So it's just the, the rear neighbor is, is, is the issue that's here and some type of a more detailed plan. That would show how that would be planted. Is, is that what you're looking for?
I, 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 that's what I would want is, you know, more detailed plan on the types of plants and growth and all that to give, uh, sort of insurance that the back properties aren't, I mean, reasonably, I mean, everyone's going to be reasonably affected, but that we try to limit the amount of, uh, privacy impact primarily in the back. I, I would also have a discussion, you know, maybe the neighbor on the right-hand side, uh, might get involved with that as well. Not knowing the full conversation between the applicant and that neighbor. Uh, but to me, it sounds like it would make more sense to have the right and the rear. You know, looked at a little bit, uh, more with fine-tooth comb as far as a new fence as well as, um, you know, privacy screening.
Uh, I, I would agree. So would, would one of you want to make a motion to that effect?
Uh, just quick questions to, to staff. Uh, what is the available hearing, uh, if they brought this back?
We're running out of time this year though. That's the thing. They canceled the first of December, right? We got a letter to that effect today.
Yeah. Tentatively, we did, uh, December fifteenth already has four items on it. So the earliest would probably be January fifth.
Well, can we, could we, if they work through it quickly, can we somehow get it on the consent calendar or some, just some way for us to look at it?
We can, but Ja has another item going on December fifteenth that, um, that she needs to fully vet. We can certainly try for that Commissioner Carrick, but just trying to be realistic with staff time and so.
And we have, we have the holidays, right? It's, it's hard because we're going to lose people's time between now and the first of the year.
Yeah.
And it's too tight for December one?
I think you canceled December one.
Yeah.
We can make it.
You know, we still have the two-week notification period, right? So we're still within that?
Yeah, we usually send out.
Before we do that though, some of us, did we receive a cancellation notice today?
I did, yes.
Yeah. So some of us have made plans already. So I'm not sure that that date exists on everyone's calendar at this point.
Um, so January fifth would probably be the most realistic. So.
I think it's unfortunate that they have to wait that long for such a simple matter. I think, uh,
I, I agree.
I, I mean, in, in lieu of the scheduling issue, I, I might consider just making it a condition of approval. If David, David, what's your thoughts on that?
I thought it would be just a condition of approval to begin with, uh, because my, my concerns really are just the, the screening and the fences.
I, I would agree with that because I, I, I think we heard from, uh, Joyce that they were more than willing to actually make the effort to do what was necessary on the, on the property lines as far as planting and so forth. So.
Okay. Well, it, so, uh, and given that, uh, David, I, I'd be receptive to a motion with a condition, you know, additional condition.
Okay. Someone like to try that?
Yeah. Commissioner Bishop, we're, uh, at the end. So we're looking for a motion right now.
Yes, if, if you'd like to, I think so.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, approve SC twenty-one dash zero zero three-two at eighteen fifty capistrana way. Subject to the attached, uh, findings with an additional condition at the applicant's rear inside, right side neighbors. Work together with a suitable landscape plan to, for privacy for the rear neighbors and then also that a, um, new fence being installed at whatever the max is. I think it's what six plus two for the rear and the right, uh, property line. Now it's the left property line. Jude, you remember the the fence line there? Cause I just remember sort of like that hillside kinda.
Yeah.
Not a whole lot of space there.
Not the left or right side?
The left side, the uphill side property, you know, I don't think there's any privacy concerns there. So I'm not too sure we need anything there, but definitely the rear and the right side.
Okay.
So, so a new fence and new landscape. Working the neighbors together to find something acceptable that will provide the privacy, uh, as well as the other concerns regarding PG&E and height and all that stuff. If you can weed that down to a shorter format.
David, uh, can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Just, you know, the staff talks about fifteen gallon plant material. I just, I would want to get give a minimum of substantive size so they get immediate impact, whether that's twenty-four inch box or, or whatnot, but getting back to whatever they select, I would want them to get the largest box size possible. So the impact is immediate.
Do you have a, I'm not familiar with box size would.
Twenty, twenty-four inches, the, you know, the first box size. So, yeah, but it depends on what type of screening they choose. So, uh, you know, if you put a five gallon bucket in, that's not going to grow for quite a few years. So they, they, staff does talk about fifteen gallon, uh, which is good, but twenty-four inch should get you up to the next level.
Yeah, I because you got some issues on, you know, the rear and the side where the side doesn't want something that big. And the back wants something relatively big. So I would, uh, be leaning more towards the fifteen gallon. Minimum fifteen gallon. And if the applicant wants, you know, bigger, they can put in bigger.
All right. Well, I'll defer to you on the motion, but, uh, I just want to point that out.
Yep. Yep. I would, so I would amend the motion to have minimum fifteen gallon sized plants.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
David?
I'll second.
Would you second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you Jude. Okay. We'll call the, call the roll on this, David.
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Frank is an I too. Can, congratulations, uh, to the owner and the architect.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
You're most welcome. Okay. Uh, moving on to, uh, item five, actually on the agenda. SC twenty-one zero zero thirty-four, seven seven nine Santa Rita Avenue. So, uh, again to the commissioners, have we had any expertise, uh, communications on this particular project? No from me. Jude?
No.
And no from Frank. Okay. So, uh, Sean, could we have a, a staff report on this particular project, please?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Um.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm double checking something really quick. Um, yes, the project, uh, tonight is a designer view application for a new two-story house. The project includes, uh, twenty-three hundred and fourteen square feet at the first story. Sixteen eighty-four at the second story and a new one thousand eight hundred and ten square foot basement. This slide provides the rendering of the proposed house, which also includes an eight hundred ninety, eight hundred forty-nine square foot detached ADU. The subject property is located along, uh, Santa Rita Avenue, uh, between Van Buren and West Bertola. Uh, the street is considered diverse character as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. Um, the project, uh, proposes a twenty-five foot front setback, thirty-eight point two foot rear setback, which exceeds the minimum twenty-five foot setbacks. It does, uh, meet and exceeds the sec- side, uh, first to second story site setbacks as conveyed in the plans. The height is being proposed at twenty-six point nine feet with a maximum height of twenty-seven feet. And it does comply with floor, lot coverage, daylight plane requirements. Uh, this conveys, uh, issue A one oh one, the basement area, um, the, uh, the first story and then also the footprint of the ADU behind it or floor plan of the ADU behind it. Um, the second story, uh, which is comprised of bedrooms, uh, bathrooms, uh, laundry and stairwell openings. The proposed architecture is modern farmhouse, which has been before the commission before. It's a mix of gable and hip roofs. The, uh, materials includes, uh, you know, the farmhouse style includes steep pitched roofs, horizontal, uh, board bed siding and aluminum wood frame, uh, windows. To be consistent with neighborhood context, the applicant is using the horizontal, horizontal uh, board bed, which is found in the neighborhood to improve its transition to the neighborhood. The front elevation is composed of a five-foot deep front porch extends along the front, wraps around the right side of the elevation. It, it is comprised of one, uh, of a series of gable forms, uh, along the front elevation and a hip, uh, dormer window, uh, along the center of the structure. Uh, that does encompass the stairwell for the house. The rear elevation is comprised of a hip, uh, roof form uh, along the left side of the rear elevation with a shed roof form at the center of the house and a gable roof form along the right side. The right elevation is composed of a hip roof form at the first story and sloping roof forms from the front and rear-facing gable forms. Uh, similarly, this occurs along the left elevation. According to residential design guidelines, uh, materi- uh, a house should be designed to utilize similar, uh, elements in regards to materials and scale found in the neighborhood in reviewing the neighborhood context. Fast, uh, while, you know, eight-foot plate heights are, are common at the second story. Staff did find taller plate heights along the first story for homes in the neighborhood. Also did find a variation of pitches, including four and twelve, six and twelve, eight and twelve, and twelve and twelve. In reviewing city records, this is conveyed in the report. Uh, we did find, uh, this provides the variation within the immediate neighborhood context, including a house to the right of the house site at seven sixty-seven Santa Rita, um, with a ten-foot plate. Six and twelve and eight and twelve, uh, pitches. This was confirmed by staff by reviewing the building permit plans and reviewing the approved plans by the designer review commission. And, and this conveys, uh, some of the other information that staff confirmed through city records. Uh, while ten-foot plate is generally considered a, to be a tall wall plate height that contributes to excessive bulk in residential neighborhoods. The ten-foot plate is already an established plate height in the immediate neighborhood context. And the proposed house will be similar in plate heights to the house to the right of the proposed property. The second story again is centered over the, over the first story and is visually softened by the roof massing, which is a common feature utilized in the city to reduce overall bulk. And along the rear second story elevation, there are, uh, four windows. Of those windows, uh, there's one large size window, uh, in the master bathroom with a two-foot sill height. Sorry. Can you hold? I apologize. My husband just got out of surgery, so I have to go grab something. I apologize. Can, can you hold on one second, Chair? I apologize.
Yes, Sean, please.
Apologize for that. I didn't expect that. Um, okay, I can come down. So along the rear second story elevation, there are four windows, one large size window in the master bathroom with a two-foot sill height. One large size window in bedroom number four with a two-foot sill height. A small size window in bathroom number three with a five-foot sill height and large size window in bedroom four, bedroom number four with a two-foot sill height. Typically with lower sill heights and bedrooms, there is a potential for privacy impact. However, there is a thirty-three point two five foot setback to the left property line, a forty-four and a half foot setback to the right property line. And a thirty-eight foot setback to the rear. The applicant has worked with staff to incorporate fast-growing evergreen screening along the side and rear property line. The staff does believe it reduces privacy impacts in neighboring properties. This provides the grading and drainage plan. Uh, staff does provide a discussion in the report in regards to uh, limited grade changes occurring on the site with the development of this property. Um, there are, uh, a series of trees that are proposed for removal, including a total of thirteen trees. A landscape inventory table is provided in the report, um, and an arboretum report is also provided. Uh, staff does recommend the applicant provide, or does recommend a condition requiring that the applicant uh, provide updated arboretum report that evaluates the oak tree number twenty-eight and the two coast live oaks in the front yard. To make sure, uh, that any necessary mitigation measures are provided throughout construction, including demolition to preserve the trees. Again, this concludes staff's presentation. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Okay, Sean, thanks. Uh, questions for staff? Jude?
No questions.
Thank you. David?
Nope, none.
Okay, thank you. I have none either. So with this is the owner and the architect, uh, available for presentation as well?
Yeah, I'm the architect. I'm Bill McIntosh with, uh, Texory McIntosh Architects. The Martins are here, the owners, and Tom Clip, landscape architect is also here.
Did you want to present to us this evening?
Okay. Are you ready? Oh, so, um, I'll try and keep it quick. Um, basically if I can share a screen, I don't know if that's.
If you can, but you can.
Sure. Sorry, I think I hit this. So I'm just going to run through the plans. Um, so just to start with the, you know, when we started the project, um, the owner was, you can see, he was concerned about creating more yard space and possibly, um, maybe remodeling the existing house or, or doing addition. Uh, I'll, I'll let them introduce themselves, but you know, they have three boys and they need more space. And they have a big family, uh, you know, extended family as well. So we, we looked at the, you know, the, here's the survey and we looked at the house and they were thinking about moving the house forward. But as you can see, there's a, um, right-of-way dedication in the front right here. So what happens is, um, the existing house is actually encroaching into the front setback by five feet, which limits the amount of work that we can do. Um, and so basically we came to the conclusion that, um, we should build a new house, um, that suits their needs, um, and their growing family and, um, and so our, let's see, it's good to the site plan. So here, yeah, so here's the existing, you can see the existing house. Here's the setback line. It's, it's encroaching. So what happens is the road is, is way over here. So the, there's kind of an illusion of this, uh, a very, uh, large front yard. But the property line is actually well into the, the site. So our, you know, our strategy basically was we wanted to sort of try and take advantage of some of that front yard area and, and rear yard and having an, you know, an outdoor patio was very, um, important to the client. And so and there's this, this house being built recently had some screening along this property line. And we wanted to basically take advantage of the south, south light and so forth. So we kind of shifted the house toward the, toward the north and kind of centered the mass of the house slightly to the north. We worked with Sean pretty closely in terms of when we're developing the house, you know, we took his recommendations to lower the plates in certain areas such as the garage and the the side yards, we reduced the windows, we had some windows in the master. Just look here, we had some windows, we ended up reducing those to minimize the privacy concerns. And here we have a basically, we have a roof between, you know, on the side yards. So side yards are pretty well protected. And then we also did, we did at one point have balcony over here that Sean discouraged. So we took his recommendation on that as well. So we think, you know, I've had the chance to walk through the neighborhood several times. I went back and forth with Sean and the roof pitches and things like that. And we, I think we came to an agreement that the, you know, the pitches, the various pitches in the, on this house work well with the neighborhood. It's kind of an eclectic and it's kind of a, I think it's a little, a very nice neighborhood where things are layered over time, you know, the various styles and but there's a lot of different designs that we could pull from and and then basically from there we went just went through this, the design process. And I think the plans kind of show you know, what we propose. So I'll introduce the Martins and and maybe Tom can fill in with some of the planting and screening that he's proposed. So Justin and Lee, are you there?
Hi, Lee and Justin Martin. Thank you all for your time tonight. I will be real brief. As Phil said, we, we moved to La Soutis about six years ago and absolutely fell in love with the town and the neighborhood. And now we're just hoping we can build the house to match our for boys and and we've tried through the process to be really respectful of, you know, a house that would fit in with the neighborhood and the neighbors. So
Yeah, we had wine and cheese with the neighbors who wanted to come over. We talked to as many neighbors as possible.
Trying to hear, hear concerns along the way and, you know, make sure we're addressing them.
And we, yeah, we just love the neighborhood. We've got the kids are at the Santa Rita Elementary School right down the street and we really like it here.
Yeah, we've gotten several letters and calls.
We also had a Zoom meeting with Bill with some of the neighbors who wanted to understand more about the project.
Great neighborhood. So Tom, I don't know if you have anything to add about the
I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I'm Tom Clop, the project landscape architect. It's a, it's been a really fun project to develop because the front yard is so uniquely deep. And so we were able to really put an area of play for the lawn in the front yard as well as the vegetable garden. And then the back is truly an extension of the interior of the house to the exterior with large doors that open up to the sunny aspect of that corner of the property. And we have put around the property is the planting plan show plant material that will grow quickly and give adequate screening around the perimeter of the property. And that we have no issue with adding to the building permit set for the project, the conditions that have been requested for the two oak trees that are actually not on the property, but in the public right away, but that's fine. And they're very significant trees to the project as well. And I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
All right. Well, well, thank you. All of the architect owners and landscape architects. So with that, questions from the commissioners? Jude?
No questions.
David?
No questions.
Okay, great. Frank has no questions either. So thank you very much. All right, Guido, do we have any speakers from the public on this project?
Yeah, let me just go down the list here. And no, that was for Rita. One second. And Ruchi, Ruchi?
No questions. Thank you.
And Thomas, oh, Thomas, you're the, you're the landscape architect. And then 7333, did you want to speak on this item? Last four, 7333. Okay. And then Tony, yeah, Tony, would you like to speak on this item? Nope. Okay. I believe that's everybody. Chair Bishop.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Guido. So with that, we'll close the public comment section on this project and open it for the commission to discuss. So David, would you like to kick it off?
Yeah, to me, I mean, it's not as difficult property, even though it does have the funky little setback in the front. I think they did a good job with it. I think it fits in the neighborhood quite well. I think it's a beautiful house. Well thought out.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay, Jude?
Yes, similar comments. This is a special neighborhood. The Van Buren, Santa Rita properties tend to be larger. The homes are scale larger. So unlike some other projects we've seen tonight, which are on narrower tighter lots. I think the architecture and the scale of the architecture is more appropriate in keeping in the neighborhood context. So architecturally, I think the home is wonderful. And in terms of privacy and scale and mass, I think we meet all the findings that are in the design guidelines. And I'm just happy to see the McIntosh Duxbury name again on a set of plans. So congratulations and wonderful landscape design, Tom. So thank you.
All right. All right, Jude. Yeah, thanks. So I agree. I think it's a, it's a great project. It's going to fit very well into the neighborhood. I love the neighborhood. My children all went to Santa Rita elementary school. So you picked a really great place to raise the children and to build a new home. So project has my, my support as well. Would one of you gentlemen like to make the motion for the project, please?
I could do this one.
Okay, you?
I move that we, excuse me, I get the numbers here. I move that we approve SC 21-0034, the new home at 779 Santa Rita Avenue per the conditions and findings as listed in the staff report.
A second. Thank you, Dave. David. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll call a roll on this. Jude?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And Frank, I so project approved. Congratulations to the family, architect and the landscape architect. Great job on that one. Okay, that was our last project for this evening. And we're going to move down to commissioners reports and comments. And in this section, Jude, I was thinking if you had any update for us, maybe on the the subcommittee work that was discussed at our last meeting, I think I would like to hear. I don't know if David's current on it or not. So
Yeah, yeah. So just to update, David and yourself, Michael and I attended a Zoom on Tuesday of this week, I believe, Tuesday night, about a two hour Zoom with staff. And we heard some of the recommendations that have been developed by staff to, you know, get some regulations on, on the book to help comply with SB eight and nine. So basically the discussion revolve, resolve, revolved around what, what G, I think G presented to us, which included input from city council and probably previously planning commission. So Michael and I were responding to ideas, but basically, you know, these were some things that we will just have to live with at the ministerial level. But where we could, we were making any suggestions in terms of balcony locations, window placement, daylight plane, anything and everything that we could think of that would help staff craft some of these regulations that could be adopted by council before year end. So they are still in formulation. You know, I think they're taking our ideas as well as everybody else and kind of shape, shaping a document that we will probably see once again. And probably Guido can expand on that a little bit more.
Thanks. Guido, anything you'd add to that for us?
Yeah, Jaws doing fabulous work. Her and our deputy city attorney Eric are taking the lead. We're going back to the council November 30th. The staff report was due to the city manager on Monday. I sent it to him on Monday. We're waiting for his edits. And then once the report is a public record, then we will release it to the DRC. And everybody can comment, but more obviously, more specifically, the two members of the subcommittee, and if we miss something or you want to add something, more than willing to take those edits in. So, yeah. So more, more, more to follow.
We know Anita here. Has the city clerk said when she's likely to post that online?
She usually posts things eight days before the meeting. So that would be the 22nd.
So so you guys all know how to go look at the city council agenda and find that. And then send Guido any comment suggestions or whatevers. Because those can still get considered. I don't think that council will probably act the first time we see this. We are already scheduled a likelihood that we'll see it a second time in December for final action. So don't hesitate to speak up, please. You guys have the most expertise on all of this.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I would just add to that, Guido, where at least I am, and I'm sure others are too. We're all quite busy this time of the year. So if you could just maybe, you know, ping us to say, hey, it's posted. Why don't you take a look at it? I think you'll probably get better results that way.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I can, I can definitely send it on. Yeah, that's fine.
At least from me, you will. Okay, all right. So on the topic of reports and comments, besides the subcommittee, is there anything else that David, you'd like to add here?
No, I just want to thank Jude and Commissioner Moff for taking on that.
I agree. Yeah, they were definitely the two right people to represent the commission. So
Well, I can tell you, I could tell you staff did a heck of a lot of work already. So you know, they made it quite easy for us to comment and, you know, add to what they've already developed.
Yeah, John did the bulk of the work and she deserves the credit. So thank you, John.
So, so I just had a Michael or excuse me, Frank, you know, as this is evolving, I'm just wondering in the end, you know, how this all impacts the DRC and that's obviously going to be TBD. But I'm just a little concerned that a lot of these projects will go via the SB eight or nine route and we might not end up seeing a bunch of stuff. So
I agree. I agree with that. And I think Guido, he's, he's thinking his way through this too, because if it's just the, we don't see that many remodels actually for the two story projects, right? Most of them are new builds these days. So I think we'd have a very, very limited agenda. And I think Guido, you'll, you'll brief us more on that as we go through this process, correct?
I will, but my last day with the city is December 9th. I'm leaving to go become a director of another city. So John and Sean will have to carry the torch after, this is probably my last DRC meeting. So yeah, but we will definitely. I'm still here till December 9th, but yeah, definitely brief you guys until then. So
So you weren't going to bring that up before the meeting ended, right?
Well, just asking me to carry something forward, but I won't be here in a couple of weeks. So, yeah, so.
So, right. So I'm not sure how this will work, Jude. Actually, I imagine someone will fill in here. Maybe Sean will.
Sean, it would be the main staff person for the December 15th meeting. That will be the next DRC meeting. I will be gone by then. So
Yes.
And I'm not going anywhere. I don't do the staff work, but I'm not going anywhere.
We only got to know you a little bit.
Yeah.
All in COVID.
Yeah. Well, thank you guys. It's really good commission to serve, learned a lot from you guys and definitely going to carry some of the stuff forward that you guys taught me. So thank you. Excellent commission to work with. So thank you.
Well, best of luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Back to Jude's question, which I think is a pertinent one is, you know, the role of the DRC going forward. And I guess we don't have an answer to that yet, Jude. So we're going to have to wait and see. But if the way I understand, I guess it's SB eight and nine, that it would seem to me that it would limit the number of projects that come before us.
I can say two things that I know for sure. One is that SB eight, nine are not retroactive. So anything that's in the pipeline now will continue to process under the old rules. And I don't know if Guido wants to talk about how much is in the pipeline, but whatever's in the pipeline is going to keep coming through under the old rules. The impact of SB eight and nine, a lot of it's going to hang and fall on eventual guidance and interpretation of the state law as to whether or not a scraper and rebuild that does not have an ADU will come to you or not. And whether a scraper and rebuild that has a detached ADU will at least have the house come to you or not, assuming that they're two stories. And, and nobody has an absolute hundred percent guaranteed take to the bank litigation proof answer to those questions yet.
Okay, I believe that to be the truth as well. Okay, so I guess we have to wait, I think, as a commission to see how this will play out, Jude. But I would expect that maybe the workload would become lighter. And maybe this would go, you know, my view, Mr. pragmatist here, maybe this would be once a month rather than twice a month. I don't know. We'll have to wait and see.
Yeah. So do we know if the ones that are in the pipeline? Do the applicants have the option of pulling out and just starting new and doing over the counter?
Uh, yeah, what we've been advised by the city attorney is if a project has been deemed complete before January 1st, then the old rules would apply. If it's deemed complete after January 1st, the new more objective standards would apply. So it kind of depends on when staff means it complete.
What's the definition of complete?
Complete is a legal term for planning law in terms of, are you meeting all of the requirements of the city in terms of our submittal requirements? And consistency with the code as currently written. So so there's two items completeness and consistency. Usually we look more towards completeness.
Okay. All right. Well, again, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, just there we have it. The council member is right that just like the ADU laws, like I helped write the ADU ordinance. There were six bills, most of them conflicted with each other. And it took HCD, the state HCD until August of 20 to come up with a guidance memo to give cities and city staff direction. And up until then, you know, we were all kind of trying to figure it out, right? So the council member, the councilwoman is 100% correct that, you know, until there's a court case or some guidance from the state, we're all trying to do as best we can to interpret the laws. So
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. I guess there's just more to come.
Yep, more to come.
More to come. Okay. Can you tell us where you're going or is that a secret?
Oh, no, to be the community development director for the city of Marina. It's a small city in Monterey County.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Like an hour, it's an hour from my house in South San Jose, so.
Congratulations, that's great. Good for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, two more items on here, potential future agenda items. Guido, anything for us there?
Sean is being given an upgraded Ring Central license because he's going to be the host of the December 15th meeting, and there already are four items for that meeting, and Jaws taking one, and Sean has three items for that night, so he'll be busy for December 15th, so.
Are they all new or any rehash?
All of them are new. Yes, all of them are new items. So.
Interesting. Okay, all right.
All right, just a quick, just a quick question on technical. Is there any way that through Ring Central to control when people can speak other than relying on them to mute themselves?
Uh, yeah, so there's two versions of Ring Central. We're using the more basic version. There is the webinar format. It takes a little bit more work on the staff end, and you have a lot more controls. It just takes a little bit more work on the front end, and then you actually have to manually enter all the emails every time you set up a meeting, so it takes a little bit longer, but yeah, that, that format has more controls, so.
Any update on when we'll be in person?
No, that, that's fully at the discretion of the council. We're following the council's lead, so. So.
January 1st, right, Anita?
That's, yeah, that's up to council.
Stand by.
Yeah.
We gotta wait to find.
That's our word for the day.
Yep, yep, yep.
I guess it is, yeah. All right, well, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and with that, I guess I'll adjourn the meeting at, how long do we have here? 9:36.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
All right, good night.